The members of the school board and our superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching. A form is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Epps Elementary School, Mr. Jamal Jones and Jasmeen Shrock. First, Jamal will come forward and deliver the invocation, and he will be followed by Jasmeen, who will come forward and deliver the pledge. So, Mr. Jamal, would you please come forward? And before you begin, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Good evening to the school board and Dr. Parker Superintendent. My name is Jamal Jones and I'm a 4th grade student at Epps Elementary School. Tonight for the invocation, I'd like to share a poem entitled "To Catch a Fish" by Illoise Greenfield. It takes more than a wish to catch a fish. You take the hook, you add the bait, you concentrate, and then you wait, you wait, you wait, but not a bite. The fish don't have an appetite. So tell them what good bait you've got and how your bait can hit the spot. This works a whole lot better than a wish if you really want to catch a fish. Thank you.
Oh, that was wonderful. It's Jasmeen. Would you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before you get started?
Hi, my name is Jasmeen, and I'm from Epps Elementary School. And when I grow up, I want to be a 1st grade teacher.
Aww.
Can you please stand up for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Jasmeen and Jamal, both of you two have done a wonderful job. What a wonderful poem. And, Ms. Jasmeen, what a wonderful directing us into the pledge. I ask that we all give them another round of applause. Again, thank you for coming out to the meeting. Supporting Jamal and Jasmeen tonight are their family members and school family. Could they please be standing up to be recognized? The board appreciates your encouragement and that you have given these students. And again, thank you for bringing them out here to the meeting today. And I see that we've got a contract for you somewhere. I mean, what school teachers that are way. We're going to move the agenda again, and I guess at this time, we're going to have board recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll come up with, we'll start off with Virginia's most outstanding crossing guard.
Good evening.
Evening.
We are honored to present this much recognitions. The Department of Transportation and the Safe Routes to School Program promote and recognize the work and dedication of school crossing guards each year. Tonight, we're pleased to share that Newport News Public Schools is home to an outstanding crossing guard. Please join me in congratulating Security Officer Clarence Daniels, one of Virginia's most outstanding crossing guards. Officer Daniels?
Congratulations.
Officer Daniels has worked for Newport News Public Schools for over 20 years and served, has served in several schools. In fact, he started his career with Newport News Public Schools as a parent involvement specialist. And then he quickly transitioned to become a school security officer. He has served as a security officer at Newsome Park for the past four years. In addition to ensuring that the students and staff are safe and secure while at school, Officer Daniels helps students cross the street safely to and from school every day. Our local Safe Routes to School Coordinator nominated him for this award and wrote, "Like the old post office motto, neither snow nor rain nor heat nor gloom of night stays these couriers from the swift completion of their appointed rounds." Mr. Daniels has been a devoted crossing guard for years. He is at his post bright and early, ready to greet students and parents as they arrive at school in the morning. He is ever vigilant, watching for careless motorists and unsafe situations that surround the school. Officer Daniels also received numerous recommendations from students, parents, and staff for this award. He says he is honored to serve as a representative for Newport News Public Schools. Officer Daniels, congratulations on this recognition, and thank you for keeping our students safe and secure. And while Officer Daniels is making his way back to his seat, we'd like to acknowledge the family and friends that joined him tonight. Would you please stand? His wife is a member of the NMPS team. And I also saw our supervisor of security, Dr. Jeff Nelson. Thank you, Dr. Nelson. Again, congratulations on the well-deserved honor. This week is School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in Virginia. Each February, the Virginia School Boards Association designates one week to recognize and acknowledge the work and assistance that clerks provide to school board members, superintendents, and the school community at large. School board clerks are responsible for keeping the records of meetings and documenting official proceedings of the school board, among many other duties. Tonight, on behalf of the school board, we recognize and thank our new clerk of the board, Tiffany Moore Buffalo, for her service to the school board and this community. It's the start of many years to come, we hope. Ms. Moore Buffalo, would you please come down? Ms. Moore Buffalo joined the NMPS team last month. We're still in the honeymoon process. She brings a wealth of experience to Newport News Public Schools, having served for a number of years, I didn't want to say how many, in public education administration. She was responsible for keeping a record of all school board proceedings, including maintaining the board's online meeting portal, Board Docs. She'll maintain the board's calendar, coordinate and schedule their professional development, and will serve as a liaison between the school board and the public. So, Ms. Moore Buffalo, on behalf of the school board, the administration, and the citizens of this community, thank you very much, and we look forward to many years. Tonight, we also have the pleasure of acknowledging the dedicated members of the Newport News School Board. Our governor has proclaimed February 2019 as School Board Appreciation Month in Virginia. This observance was established by the Virginia School Boards Association in 1989 to encourage public recognition of the roles and responsibilities of school board members and to highlight the importance of public education. The V S B A proclamation reads in part, "Whereas the education of Virginia's school-aged children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual strength of our Commonwealth is built, whereas locally elected and appointed school board members play an important role in our representative democracy, and as the decisions of local school boards directly influence instruction in Virginia's public schools; and whereas the leadership of school boards affects the development and future of our children and ensures that students are prepared to compete in local, state, national, and global economies; whereas local school boards devote themselves to providing a high-quality education for all students in the Commonwealth; and whereas school board members work with parents, businesses, educational professionals, and other community members to create and sustain an educational vision for our students; and whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia is proud of our educational system and appreciates the efforts of local school board members to make the Virginia public school system an excellent place in which to educate our youth; whereas School Board Appreciation Month recognizes school board members for their leadership and support of a public, of a public school system from which the entire Commonwealth benefits." The proclamation has been signed by the governor. And I would like to point out that as constitutional officers of the Commonwealth, Newport News School Board members are responsible for setting educational policies, employing school personnel, providing buildings and equipment, ensuring a transportation system, and dispersing school funds, among many other duties. Their job is not an easy one, but our school board is committed to serving our community and ensuring that all students are given every opportunity to excel through education. Each member of our school board has a certificate of honor from the Virginia School Boards Association at his or her seat and recognition of their commitment and service on behalf of the students, staff, and citizens of Newport News and the Commonwealth of Virginia. And they also have a small token of our appreciation from all of us here at Newport News Public Schools. Would you please join me in saluting and congratulating our Newport News Public School Board for their service? Again, we thank them. At this time, we'll take about an eight-minute break so that our honorees and their families may leave. If you choose to do so, of course, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight, so we'll stand in recess for about eight minutes. Thank you.
The best ships in the world are built at Newport News Shipbuilding, and some of the best shipbuilders are women. Lady engineers and instructors spent a morning at the Apprentice School, inspiring 40 female middle school students from across Newport News Public Schools to explore STEM as a successful career pathway. The young ladies are all members of Bloom, a district-wide, student-led empowerment initiative designed to equip our future leaders. At the Apprentice School, the young ladies participated in a number of creative activities focused on setting goals, building self-confidence, and dreaming big about their futures. The ladies of Bloom also explored career options with hands-on demonstrations. Professionals from different shipbuilding departments talked about their vocations and shared some of the high-tech tools that helped build the Navy's mightiest ships. After leaving the Apprentice School, the students visited Newsome Park Elementary. Here, their roles were reversed, allowing the middle school ladies to lead select elementary students in fun STEM activities focused on team-building. It was a great opportunity for the middle school students to give back to a younger generation while inspiring unity and greatness among all the young ladies. All students need a caring adult to offer support and guidance during childhood. At every grade level in Newport News Public Schools, students can find the trust and reliability they seek in our school counseling staff. Professional school counselors play a vital role, ensuring every student has the resources, skills, and social development needed to become college, career, and citizen-ready. With elementary students developing their academic self-concept and competence as learners, school counselors are perfectly trained and equipped to assist their growth. As professional educators with a mental health perspective, elementary school counselors provide a diverse student body with grade-appropriate lessons and resources to build a foundation of success at an early age. As students develop from childhood into adolescence, professional school counselors help students navigate the excitement and challenges found in middle school. School counselors invite students and their families to workshops about emerging technologies, how to stay safe on social media, and provide early financial preparation for college. While students search for their own unique identity, school counselors organize a range of resources to give them choices through career pathways and social experiences. In high school, teenagers are quickly growing into young adults and experience the culmination from years of hard work as their hopes, dreams, and ambitions become a reality. Professional school counselors share in these successes while guiding students towards a fitting career or beneficial post-secondary experience. But the work isn't done yet, as high school counselors continue to offer learning experiences for families and help shape students into contributing citizens. The work of the professional school counselor is both exhausting and rewarding. And while some victories take years to obtain, the results are well worth the effort. The professional school counselor is an important component to create healthy communication between school and home while assisting students, teachers, and families in achieving academic and social success for our youth. The educators at Enterprise Academy are constantly using creative teaching practices to engage students in becoming lifelong learners. So while the teachers are building up contributing citizens, the students were invited to do some building of their own during a STEM challenge. Career and Technical Education Teacher Sean Slaughter and Professional School Counselor Rodney Taylor organized a bridge-building challenge for all of the elementary, middle, and high school students currently attending the alternative school located in Oyster Point. Professional engineers from Huntington Ingalls and VDOT spoke to all the students about their careers through the school's television studio. They also gave the budding engineers some important structural tips about building their own bridges. In the classrooms, six student teams went to work using limited construction materials, dry spaghetti, and mini marshmallows. To build a successful bridge, the students had to communicate with each other while sharing ideas, problem-solve and adjust as the structure came to life, and manage their time wisely to finish in the time allotted. Many of the completed structures were able to hold a heavy weight, earning the students a portable charger prize donated by VDOT. Students that build together, learn together. And the students at Enterprise Academy were able to learn a lot from this fun and challenging STEM activity. November is recognized by the Virginia School Boards Association as Take Your Legislator to School Month. Elected officials at the city and state level graciously made time to spend a day touring Newport News Public Schools, helping to strengthen bonds and lines of communication between our school system and political leaders. The theme for the day was "School Building Needs in Newport News." The tour began at Warwick High School, with Superintendent Dr. George Parker presenting some of the projected capital improvement needs across the school system to ensure student safety, access to learning opportunities, and provide repairs to aging buildings. The elected officials then rode a school bus to Newport News's newest school, Discovery STEM Academy. Proud students energetically led the guests through their school, illustrating how an updated building helps facilitate student success and creates meaningful learning experiences. At the end of the day, legislators and school leaders were thankful for the opportunity to engage in productive dialogue while agreeing that providing the best for our students is a priority in Newport News and across the Commonwealth.
Welcome back, and hope that you enjoyed our school board spotlight. During our meeting, at this time, we're going to move the agenda to item number two. And during our meeting, we provide time for the public to address the board. These are scheduled at the early part of the agenda, and then again toward the end of the meeting. The board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we consider your concerns, and we'll get back with you at a later time. Please comply with our three-minute time limit. As you, as you begin your comments, a green light comes on, the yellow light signals we have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light indicates that your time is up. And at that time, we ask that you would please complete your comments. That said, as you hear your name, would you please come forward? And so we, tonight, we do have cards. And first up, we have Ms. Frederica Hill. Would you please come forward?
Good evening. My name, my name is Frederica Hill. I'm an instructional assistant at Passage Middle School, also the Newport News Educational Association treasurer and co-chairperson of the UNISER for the Peninsula. Today, I want to thank Dr. Parker and the staff for allowing us to go to Lobby Day on January 28th, 2019, and the rally. We have learned a lot. We have gotten what we wanted from the generals, and we have pushed, pushed, pushed. And our second thank you is some of the staff came to the teacher of color this weekend, Dr. Mitchell and Mrs. Cooper, along with two of their students in residency, and also Ms. Kim Hastings and myself. We really appreciate them coming, and this is the, oops, this is a certificate they received. They received eight points, eight hours of professional development. We thank you, and we will continue working with you all.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Leon Sancofa.
All right, I'm going to talk really fast. I've got three minutes, got a lot of words. But anyway, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come here to approach, approach you guys. I feel like I'm approaching the bench. You're a good-looking group. It's good to see you. My name again is Leon Sancofa, and I'm a, I'm a, I'm a provider of mental health services. I've been, I've done so since 2001. The Newport News Public Schools, as I understand it, and I could be wrong, has primarily one provider providing its therapy day treatment services. I remember when it went into play. I advocated against it, by the way, then. But I would like for you to know that I find that really difficult and complexing in that families who have Medicaid have a choice in terms of choosing their providers. In our public schools, the same families that we have don't have that same choice. I think that there's nothing wrong with the provider you have, but I think that you have a lot of great quality service providers out here in the communities. The biggest thing that you probably missed a buck on is there's some of these providers out here, such as myself, who are doing really great things. It can bring some of those great ideas to communities, such as my National Call Dad program, which provides 25,000 coats around the state of Virginia, including DC and Gary, Indiana. And there are many, many programs that are being run at the grassroots, but also the programs that could be run very professionally within your schools. The difficulties, and by the way, I was a school social worker for 12 years, so I do understand the system. But the difficulties that you face is if you become just a principal or a school becomes dissatisfied with the way a particular program is running your school, you're stuck with no, nowhere to go. How do you get rid of, how do you get rid of the provider when you have to eject the whole, them from the whole school? And that's an act of Congress, and it's very complex and difficult to do. I work with different schools around the state of Virginia, and I know it's difficult. But a better scenario would be if you had four or five main providers, you'd be giving parents a choice. And with this choice, if you become unsatisfied, for example, with the program that's being run, how it's being run at Ferguson High School, for example, it's much easier for you to say, you know what, well, we're not going to allow that team or that group to run Ferguson this year. We'll move this team over. So you've got some healthy competition, and also you have, you've got a better variety of ways to move stuff around. It's kind of like having more than one, more than one principal. If you're not satisfied with the principal here, you can shift them here where they can be better served. And all I'm suggesting is that you, you consider that. But also, the Medicaid, people who are Medicaid obviously are a poor population, and what seems to happen is the middle class tends to have the opportunity, they have opportunity, and that's the democratic way. But the poor lives in, it lives in an oligarchic system, meaning that they're being dictated to. And again, my proposal to you is that you kindly consider looking at multiple service providers, and I'd be willing to work with you on seeing how that works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I am also here to advocate for T D T programs to have multiple service providers. Earlier today, I spoke with a parent guardian who is raising her grandchild. Her grandchild is in need of special services. However, she expressed to me the need or desire to want to have choices. Just because a person is of a certain social, economic status or is on Medicaid, she feels that she should have the right to choose the care that her child gets, just as though you would choose your provider for health insurance. She also feels that she has a desire that she wants to be able to choose who is her service provider for her grandchild. So I just wanted to stand to be a voice in her absence and advocate that the school board will look at options to be allowed for T D C services. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joan Woodmore, and I'm with Concerned Citizens for the rebuilding of Huntington Middle School. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the school board. We should not have to wait another two years to begin building Huntington Middle School. It has already been 10 years of delay. In my opinion, the city is going to base funding on their ability to take over the school division's job of planning what goes on school division property. It should not be allowed. The funds should be immediately allocated so that the school division's plan for Huntington can continue to progress, and that monies already spent on plans that include input from citizens will not be wasted. Any plans for any other buildings and resource centers must be separate and apart from the building of the school and not housed within Huntington. Delaying the building of Huntington delays the full education potential for students zoned for and magnet elected because it requires space that's not inherited for a full middle school curriculum and extracurricular programs and activities. Delaying building the school for city plans on city, on school property is contributing to overcrowdiness of our middle school, and such development creates safety concerns for those students. Delaying the building will result in Huntington being a school only on paper in 2020 because under the current plan, there will be no students entering Huntington Middle School. We must do something about this immediately. We must not allow the city to put another city council vision above the building of Huntington. We must not allow the diversion of any more funds for Huntington to build shopping centers and parking garages instead of that school. We resist allowing the city to hold the building of Huntington Middle School hostage until they get their way for plans and less, plans for less important than education of our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more cards? There being none, we will move the agenda to item number three, our consent agenda. Item number 3.01, minutes from work session January 15th, 2019. 3.02, minutes from our regular meeting, January 15th, 2019. 3.03, minutes from our joint work session, January 22nd, 2019. 3.04, our financial report. 3.05, personnel report. 3.06, Mintfield Sail Tower additional sublease.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the consent agenda as read by the chairman.
Second.
You heard the motion, and you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Moore, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Earley?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mrs. Sorrellslaw?
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. We will continue on with item number four. I believe there are no action items this evening, which is very rare. We will then continue the agenda with our number five, reports and information. Five point oh one, equity and success of our English language learners.
Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair Brown, members of the board, and Dr. Parker. It is my pleasure to share with you tonight how our English language, English as a second language program is working to build equity for all of our English learners throughout the division. My name is April Vasquez, the ESL instructional supervisor. Over the past several years, we've had tremendous growth in our English learner population. In two thousand and two, we had two hundred and twenty-three English learners. To date, we have one thousand five hundred sixty-six English learners in our division. That is over seven hundred percent growth over the past several years. To have an idea of the breakdown across school level, we have about fifty-eight percent of our English learners at the elementary school age level, fifteen percent middle school, and nineteen percent high school. We are also unique in that we provide services in pre-K for about eight percent of the, of our students. This slide just highlights the diversity of our English learner population in Newport News Public Schools. We have over fifty-seven home countries represented in our English learner population, fifty-five various home languages. Majority of our English learners speak Spanish, about sixty-three percent. Second to that, we have about seventy-seven percent Arabic speakers and five percent Swahili speakers and a plethora of other languages represented throughout our demographic. Want to also highlight the home countries. The top eight are listed there for you on the screen. Majority of our English learners are born here in the US. Second to that, Puerto Rico. And third to that, Afghanistan. As you may or may not be aware, Newport News is a resettlement city for refugee resettlement, and so that truly adds to our diversity as a school division. Here is a glance at how our English learners throughout the division fall along the English language continuum. A Level One student is a student that comes to us with little to know English at all, may be able to understand a basic word or phrase, but beyond that, it, English is incomprehensible for them at that time. A Level Two student may understand basic phrases or sentences given to them in English, and they may be able to produce basic phrases and sentences. A Level Three student is a student that can hold a social conversation with you, but may have difficulty with the depth and breadth of language that ties into academic vocabulary. A Level Four student is growing in their English language ability and is much more comparable to their same-age English peers. So it gives you an idea of how our division is throughout with Level Ones being one of our high groups and Level Threes also being one of our high groups. So we are addressing the needs uniquely through our instructional program to meet their needs. So in the world of ESL, we have three main focuses to be able to address the holistic, holistic program for our English learners. We address what the family needs in bridging communication and ensuring that they understand things about our American school system. We also want to build teacher expertise in providing services for our English learners. And then most importantly, we want to ensure that all instruction for our English learners is meaningful. So when a family begins their journey in Newport News Public Schools, they start at our ESL Welcome Center. The Welcome Center is located at Watkins Early Childhood and serves as a one-stop-shop for our families. So families are assisted in the registration process in a language that is familiar to them. Their stu, their children are then screened for possible English as a second language services at that time. And then we also have a school and family engagement coach onsite to help bridge communication with our families and provide specific programming about our school system. We offer a Parents as Educational Partners orientation every month for newly enrolled families, where families receive support in understanding American schools, understanding how report cards are graded, and understanding even our school calendar. So some of the norms we want to equip our families with. We also provide family communication cards because we feel it's important for all of our families to have a voice, and we provide interpreting services throughout the school division. So the family cards allow office staff to also see what languages they need to have services in. All right, so next, I'll highlight our teacher support. All right, throughout the year, we offer professional development for our teachers of all content areas to ensure that they are also addressing strategic needs of academic language for our English learners and scaffolding instruction appropriately. We also have Elevation, which is a strategy site that digs into the data on each of our English learners, of which every teacher has access to. We have ongoing partnerships with local universities to help provide further expertise in servicing our English learners. One such opportunity that is recent is with William &amp; Mary. We have an ESL reading specialist cohort, of which those going through the cohort will be duly certified as a reading specialist and ESL. So next, we will look at the students, and I will highlight the various programming elements that we offer in Newport News Public Schools. We have various models in which we provide services to our students. We have a newcomer program using a collaborative model, dual-language, and sheltered courses of each I will highlight for a moment. Our newcomer program focuses on language, literacy, and content for our English learners. It is an intensive one-year program for students that are new to the country with very limited English and may or may not have had prior schooling. We've had great success in this program over the past couple of years, to the extent that even students that come to us from places like Japan have gone into the program because of high anxiety and have exited feeling comfortable in the classroom and excelling in the classroom. So it is great to provide a safe foundation for all of our students. We currently have about eighty students in our newcomer program throughout the division. Our collaborative model is at every single elementary school throughout the division, and is where ESL teachers actually go into the classroom and provide strategic academic support in the areas of listening, reading, speaking, and writing. We also service students in secondary through this model as well. We have over one thousand four hundred and twenty-one students in a collaborative model throughout the division. Another unique program that is offered at the elementary level is dual-language immersion. This program is in partnership with our World Language Supervisor and Department as well, and students actually are working towards academic achievement in both English and Spanish throughout the day. So the goal of this program is for students to be bilingual, bilinguine, and bicultural. Currently, the enrollment in this program is about two hundred students, pre-K through four, and of those students, seventy-seven are English learners. We also provide something called sheltered instruction at the secondary level. This is similar to a newcomer program in that it is a class of just English learners, and they are focusing deeply on the content and building language and literacy. So you see a list of some of the offerings that we have in secondary that are considered sheltered instruction. Currently, we have about a hundred and seven students in one of our sheltered instruction I wanted to highlight for you the trajectory that students can come in on. So once a family comes to our ESL Welcome Center and they're assessed, we also review their academic transcripts, and then it's determined based on their language proficiency what type of courses and what type of supports they need. So here's just a continuum for you to keep in mind. A student may come in at the newcomer program, being a Level One, and they can work through that continuum. Whereas, a student may also be higher functioning in their English language capacity, and they would come in at more of a daily English collab support class. That's middle school, and this is high school. High school is where we offer most of our sheltered courses in order to ensure that they are truly being exposed to the language of the content in a rigorous manner. All right, so that is our ESL focus and some of our programs at large to ensure that our students are being serviced in an equitable manner across our school division. Now I want to highlight some of the results of our students over the years. Want to first draw your attention to the star that says thirteen percent proficient. Earlier, I showed you the levels of proficiency and kind of that continuum that students go through to become proficient in English. Thirteen percent proficient is the number of students that exit our program every year because they've gained proficiency. So they're above a Level Four at that time, and they've gained proficiency in English, which is a great accomplishment for them. Tying back to our ESL, SOL performance, we are slightly lower than, on average, our overall Newport News public school population in our reading performance. A lot of that, of course, is due to language, whereas our math performance is just slightly below the average because you're taking the linguistic piece out of it. But we want to continue to grow all of our students in their ability to read and write and speak and listen in English. So that is the focus of our program, is to build them up. Similarly, here are the SOL results for social studies and for science. This year, at the secondary level, we did add biology collab to one of our service deliveries, where an ESL teacher also supports the language of biology. This is a slide I'm probably most proud of, is our on-time graduation rate. And this year, we exceeded at ninety-three point three as our on-time graduation overall, whereas the state for ESL is right around seventy-three. So we've made such an accomplishment in the long run in ensuring that our English learners are college, career, and citizen-ready. And this is just a snapshot of some of our graduates from last year. We hold a ceremony, a special ceremony for them every year, just to recognize their efforts because they've come great strides in order to get that diploma. And as many of you know, we were also recognized by the National School Board Association last year in their Equity Award. So here's just a snapshot of some of our newcomers last year holding the award, and I'll let you also view a short clip that they compiled about our school division.
Prize winner in the twenty thousand and over enrollment category is Newport News Public Schools in Newport News, Virginia. In southeast Virginia, on a peninsula and next to the James River, is Newport News, Virginia, where public schools are providing support to refugee families new to the school district.
Eight-point scale.
A major part of our philosophy is when you have a strong family, you have a strong school, and you have a strong community. So how could we offer support to the families? Catholic Charities works with different refugee centers, and it's brought a lot of diversity to our school system.
The school district offers a robust English as a second language, or ESL, program and welcome center to get students and their families ready for their new educational environment.
When a family first comes to our Welcome Center, they come as part of the enrollment process. And so once they come in the door, we assist them using Language Line to fill out our enrollment paperwork and complete that process. And then we have an assessment specialist that then also assesses the students if they are eligible for ESL services.
Can I come and sit for a second?
Okay. Yes.
We offer the Parents as Educational Partners, or PEP, program, and they can come in here while the kids are in school, and we can educate them about the basics, the calendars, the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook.
Robin Bevelakwa is a fourth and fifth grade ESL teacher at McIntosh Elementary School.
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 Primarily, we teach early literacy skills to the children who have not been in school before. The world's a very mixed-up place right now, and this is a, I hope, a place of refuge for the children who come into my care.
We have almost a six-hundred percent increase in our ESL students from ten years ago. In two thousand and seven, we had our on-time graduation rate at about seventy-two, seventy-three percent. As of two thousand and seventeen, our on-time graduation rate is now ninety-three point four percent. That's the Board's role, is to ensure that our kids graduate college, career, and citizen-ready, no matter what language they speak, what country they come from.
Everybody, butt is stiff.
A duck, duck.
A mouse.
A duck.
Very good.
Congratulations to this year's grand prize winners.
So congratulations to all of you and to all of us, and thank you, as always, for your wonderful support for our program.
Thank you. Thank you for a wonderful report. Have any questions? Yes, Ms. Jones.
Awesome presentation, and congratulations. I just have one question about the dual-language.
The dual-language immersion program? So is that offered simply to ESL students, or is that offered to a variety of students and at which grade levels and, I guess, which schools?
Okay, so currently, our program is pre-K through four. Each year, we add another year, kind of adding a cohort each time, and it is a mixed group. So it's supposed to be fifty-fifty, fifty percent native English speakers and fifty percent native Spanish speakers. So they're actually becoming bilingual together, which is an exciting thing to see if you've ever visited some of the programs. So they're located at Watkins Early Childhood right now in Saunders Elementary School.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so a wonderful presentation, and I, I see the growth of the ESL population, and I know that we're considering adding some more positions in this area. Would it be interesting to know, in the same time period where we see the graduation rate go up, what was the number of ESL staff that we had in that department, tracking against the years where we went from seventy-three to ninety-three?
I may have to get back to the exact numbers. I believe that was last year, so I just have to do a little bit of math, probably not on the spot. But currently, we have about forty-six teachers helping support our students.
Ms. Simons?
Thank you very much for the nice presentation, and I just want to reiterate, the graduation rate for our ESL students is the same at ninety-three percent as the, the regular population of students. I mean, that, that is amazing, and that, I know there's a lot of work that goes into that, and making sure they can meet all the graduation requirements is just amazing that you all are able to do that. So I just want to draw attention to that wonderful achievement, and thank you very
Thank you very much for your report. If there's more questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, the next one, all right, Ms. Four point oh two, five point oh two, our fiscal year budget, our presentation.
Mike Witten?
Oh, but now you are.
Okay, okay. There you go. All right. Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair, Chairman Brown, and members of the school board. This evening, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Support Services, Mrs. Rousseau, and I will present the proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2020. Before beginning, I believe it is important to note that the Code of Virginia requires each superintendent to prepare a budget reflective of the needs of the school division. to prepare a budget reflective of the needs of the school division. It is the responsibility of the school board to balance the needs of the school division against the available resources. I firmly believe that the budget as presented this evening supports additional funding for many of the challenges facing our school division. More importantly, in developing this budget, we have listened to the needs of our constituents throughout this process to ensure that this budget is supportive of the great work our schools and departments moving forward. We thank you in advance for your consideration of this budget and look forward to your decision at the March school board meeting. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Rousseau to get her started, and I will join her at the podium in a moment.
Good evening. Dr. Parker's asked me to do the first few slides, so let me get started with that. And probably the most significant budget driver that we have every year is the number of students that we're here to serve. So the way that the state reimburses us for our students is based on what they call average daily membership, which is exactly that. It's our average membership from the beginning of school through March thirty-first each year. And so you can see this trend, which shows that our average membership is trending down over this period of time, which begins in two thousand and eleven. But if you notice, from two thousand and nineteen to twenty, you see a slight uptick. We work with Weldon Cooper to do our enrollment projections, and they have projected that we'll see an increase of eighty students for next year. So we're using that information to base our budget on, as we have for the last number of years. I do want to mention that this enrollment drop that you see over this period of time is largely due, and we've talked with you about this over the last couple of months, to the reduction in the number of military-connected students that we've seen over that same period of time. So you can see that we've dropped over two thousand military-connected students since two thousand and eleven. And again, for next year, we're expecting to see a reduction of three hundred and forty-two students. We base that on the number of impact aid cards that we collect from students. And we did that count over the fall and completed it last month. And so the number of students is directly related to that count, which means, and that will be the basis for our revenue for impact aid for next year. So we are reducing our federal revenue budget because of that reduction. But as you've just heard from April, we've seen kind of exponential growth in our ELL student population. And so that's certainly slightly offset the enrollment drop that we've seen in our military-connected students. And the state has projected that we will serve seventeen hundred and eighty-two ELL students next year. So this growth that she showed you, that started a little early in this slide, is planned to continue. So we need to address that in our budget. Another factor in determining the state's share of our revenue, you know, that education is a shared cost in the state of Virginia. And basically, across the entire state, the state pays fifty-five percent of all education costs, the SOQ portion of education costs. And localities pay forty-five percent. In order to determine what the specific locality is supposed to pay, the state does a rather torturous, some rather torturous math, something they call a local composite index to figure out what our portion of that is. And so for Newport, I'll spare you the details. But for Newport News, it's recalculated every biennium. And for Newport News, in this current biennium, the locality has to pay twenty-seven point eighty-one percent. And the state pays the remaining seventy-two point nineteen percent. So when the state determines the SOQ cost, they take their share and the rest of it is paid by the locality. Let me hasten to say that this is, we're talking about SOQ cost, which is the minimum cost for education. It's really not sufficient in any locality. That that would be all that we would need. Okay, so this has been our budget process up until this point. We began with a retreat with the board in October. You might remember, it seemed like just a few days ago that we did that. We talked largely with you about compensation and benefits because that's a large part of our budget every year. And then in November and December timeframe, our departments and senior management input into our budget system, what they believe the needs for the upcoming year will be. We had another work session with the board in January. And then we also had a joint work session with the council, which was largely about capital. But Dr. Parker did manage to mention a few things about our operating budget. Then we had a meeting with our Budget Advisory Committee in January. And then earlier this month, we had employee input session at our Employee Communications Forum, listening to what employees thought we might need to do with our budget. And then the superintendent hosted a public input session later that same evening here at the admin building and listened to public comment about what members of the public thought we should do with our budget. And then we had a work session with you just last week. And that has brought us to this evening. And I'm going to turn the podium now back over to Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Ms. Rousseau.
So before moving forward, I just want to acknowledge any members of our Budget Advisory Committee who are here. I think we had a few that came in earlier to be a part of this presentation this evening. And we looked at a committee, at an advisory committee, one that consisted of school division stakeholders and community members. So if any of our Budget Advisory Committee members are here, there you go, wave in the audience. And they will also, may join us at the city's presentation later in this process. As you recall, we came to the board at our last workshop with a plethora of priorities, which totaled over twenty million dollars. And we said we obviously would have to whittle those numbers down. And tonight, this balanced budget presents a budget that has identified the key priorities that we feel moving forward in this FY twenty budget will allow the division to meet some of our more significant needs. How we went about that process, one, was aligning our efforts and our resources to our strategic plan and our academic agenda. As you can see from this graphic, we need to continue to focus on employee expertise. How do we attract, hire, and retain the best employees possible? A quality curriculum, which means instruction in the classroom will always move a division forward, and how can we support that? Continuing to look at other areas, accountability, financial resiliency, and how we engage with our community. So this budget is reflective of an effort to continue to align our resources with the needs of the school division and continue to strategically move forward as a division. Now, Mrs. Rousseau mentioned some of the drivers behind budget development. So I wanted to just emphasize some of the things that we just talked about, services to students and our strategic plan as being the key area where we start to form our thoughts around budget development. But we also have to consider state and city revenue, the resources that are being provided to us by two of our governing bodies. We have to look at our compensation strategy, which would include also our commitment to providing quality health care for our employees. And then we look at non-compensation needs, technology, security, other things, building maintenance, that may also be drivers as we look at balancing and providing a budget that will move the division's needs forward. And as always, we want to involve our stakeholders and our community in the input process and feedback process as we develop a budget. And we felt we've done that with at least two public input sessions and our workshops with the board. In the area of academic supports, two key areas will be included in this budget. We'll start with an increased technology support. We're recommending that we continue to build the number of technologies, support staff in our buildings, in particular with schools that have moved forward with one-to-one conversions, where students receive an individual device for instructional purposes. And we have two of our high schools that will be in need of some additional technology assistance next year, and we would like to provide that. Additionally, this budget will provide funding for an audit of the division's academic curriculum. The last curriculum audit was completed over ten years ago. It's a fairly extensive process, which requires a third-party consultant. And we are looking at completing a curriculum audit during the FY twenty budget. We had mentioned ESL, and that was a very timely report this afternoon, and I think we, this evening, and I think you have a good understanding of the needs of our ESL population, and I think our staff are doing a very good job. Some of the things that we need to continue to stay, to keep in front of us is that the state only funds ESL teachers at a rate of seventeen teachers to one thousand students. So that's a ratio of one to fifty-nine students. We currently have a ratio of one to thirty-four. And with the addition of two hundred and thirty-two additional students, those six ESL teachers will allow us to maintain at least that ratio of one to thirty-four. It is not an excellent ratio, but it is, it does allow us to move forward with a service model that has proven to be successful for our students. There will always be, we will always continue to monitor and continue to see whether we need additional teachers in ESL, with a growing ESL population. But our recommendation at this time is to continue to maintain the ratio that we currently have, and that would require six additional teachers. The instructional assistants will provide in-classroom, small group, and individual support to English learners with a focus on academic language and science and mathematics. And the coordinator of interpretation services will coordinate the transportation of district forms and documents, both online and in paper, as well as assist with arranging for translation services for parent meetings. In the area of mental health services, we're looking at a growing need across the Commonwealth and arguably the nation in this area. And Newport News is no different. Meeting our students' mental health needs requires a team effort. Therefore, we would like to add two licensed clinical social workers next year who will focus primarily on mental health-related issues. Additionally, the state budget, the current, the governor's proposed budget, supports the cost of additional school counselors by lowering the required ratio of counselors to students. We will need to add six additional school councils at the elementary level if the budget, if the state budget is passed with a lower ratio of school counselors to students. To meet that state requirement, we would need six additional school councils at the elementary level. And this budget accounts for that. In the area of school safety, safety of our students is our top priority. Therefore, the budget supports the addition of two security officers at two of our elementary schools, Carver and Epps Elementary. We currently have four other elementary full-time security officers at four other elementaries. And we're looking at our larger elementaries. Most of our elementaries have either part-time elementary security staff. And by increasing the number of security officers at the elementary level, we can also start to shift some more support to our preschools, which is where we intend to do so. In particular, two early childhood centers, Demby and Watkins, would receive additional assistance as a result of this addition in staff. This budget supports the installation of a visitor management system that will serve all of our school offices. Today, our schools use paper sign-in systems or some standalone software that they have purchased. But we wanted to provide a common system with updated capabilities that will be integrated with our student management system. The system will be used to identify visitors and cross-reference with state data banks, such as the sex offender databases. Additionally, the system will issue visitors badges and monitor volunteer hours. So we're trying to look at a consistent process for visitors to our schools, and this will allow us to implement that. Finally, we're looking at safety upgrades, such as security cameras at Woodside, Menchville, and Menchville High Schools and Passage Middle School. And other upgrades include fire and intrusion systems at Yates Elementary and the Achievable Dream. We talked about the two technology assistants, but we also have some needs in the areas of technology, equipment, and infrastructure. So this budget, in addition to those coaches, will provide student computers, such as replacement of science laptops and Chromebooks at all high schools. Additionally, classroom sets of laptops in English classrooms at the middle and high school levels will be replaced with Chromebooks. Laptops at the early childhood centers will be replaced with iPads. And a portion of the elementary school Chromebooks will be refreshed. In terms of infrastructure improvements, this budget will support the purchase of an analytics tool, which supports our staff evaluation process and record-keeping. Additionally, we will continue our upgrades of the public announcing systems and clock systems at several schools. This budget supports upgrades at Carver, Watkins, and Deer Park Elementaries. In addition to those other non-staff-related budget priorities, we also have the area of maintenance that we need to continue to monitor and continue to address through our operating budget. As the board is aware, the cost of routine maintenance, systems replacements, and repairs for many of our buildings, offices, and centers is a financial challenge. While the city provides funding for capital projects and bus replacements in the city capital improvement budget, it has traditionally not provided enough to address all of the capital needs of the school division. Consequently, this year's budget will identify funding for maintenance projects which are not funded in the city's capital improvement budget. The items on this slide reflect the projects that will be funded in the FY twenty budget. As we look at the dollar impact of the added positions and additional, one point seven million dollars will be added, will be needed to support the increase of twenty-one new positions. However, you will see later in this presentation that we have trimmed some of our current allocation for staffing to accommodate this balanced budget, which will be presented to you in the following slides. Our non-personnel priorities that were mentioned earlier, technology, the total will be three point seven million dollars when we look at the student computers and infrastructure, public addressing and clock systems, visitor management and security cameras, and fire and intrusion systems. In the area of maintenance, that's an additional two million dollars for gym floors, loading docks, casework, auditorium ceiling, and HVACs. So the total cost for non-personnel priorities in this budget total five point seven million dollars. When we move to the area of compensation, with the exception of last year, twenty, with the exception of last year and two thousand and fifteen, it has been customary for the board to support compensation increases based on a cost-of-living adjustment and compression. Therefore, the FY twenty compensation strategy includes a salary increase for all employees of two percent, as well as an adjustment to our teacher scales to move them closer to the one point five percent between steps, which we refer to as addressing compression. When you factor in the two percent salary increase and compression, the resulting average increase for teachers will be three point one percent, which is a range, basically a range from two point one percent at the lower end of the scale to three point seven percent for employees with more experience. Additionally, we will provide experience adjustments to our support staff to address the compression that we created when we raised the starting pay for those groups. And finally, this budget will support raising the starting pay for bus drivers to fourteen eighty-one next year. That's a move to a higher range on their scale, three point five percent, and a one percent range adjustment made most, which is normally made, compared to a one percent range adjustment which is made most years. So if we look at our scales, and this, our compensation strategy calls for us to look at division comparisons and to continue to compare ourselves with other divisions to remain competitive in this region. We want to attract, hire, and retain the best talent, as do all school divisions. So annually, we compare our starting salaries, and we also compare incrementally where we compare with other divisions. The teacher's salary scales are broken up by bachelor's degree and master's degree as represented on this slide, with the bachelor's degree being represented at the top and teachers with the master's degree at the bottom portion of the slide. It's important to note that over fifty-six percent of our teachers come to Newport News or currently have a master's degree, which would make, put them on the bottom scale, bottom comparison sheet. So when we look at increments, zero years, five years, ten years, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and thirty, we can see that Newport News Public Schools is very competitive at the first ten years of the, in terms of comparison with other divisions. When we get to beyond fifteen years and beyond, we start to take a dip, which is one of the reasons why compression is so important. That allows us, when we give our annual increases, to address the employees with the most experience in our division with a higher percentage raise, which will continue to close the gap on other school divisions as well. So our compensation strategy that we currently have continues to address a competitive wage for our teachers in comparison to other local districts. It's important to note that other districts, while we're looking at this right now, they're probably looking at the same thing. So they're, and they're with the same goal in mind. So we continue to assess this annually, and we continue to ensure that our compensation strategy will allow us to remain competitive. Bus driver salaries are no different. We increased our bus, to pay for our bus drivers in this year's budget to make them more competitive. But it's always a moving target. And we, and this year is, and we're proposing with the increase to fourteen eighty-one to have our bus pretty much probably at the top of that scale right now, unless there are adjustments from other divisions. So we feel that this move this year will continue to allow us to attract and retain bus drivers. As you're aware, we're the largest school division on the peninsula, so we have As you're aware, we're the largest school division on the peninsula, so we have, we need a lot of bus drivers, and we need, and we need to keep those buses on the road. So to remain competitive is in the best interest of the school division. So this budget will raise bus driver starter pay to 1481, and, which puts them on, which is a significant adjustment. We have increased our, in the past, we've increased this, the starting pay for our support staff, and in that process, we moved any staff members who were below that starting pay to, to that starting pay, which created a, a lot of compression for employees who were already employed by the school division. So we would like to give the, give experience adjustments to these groups this year to address that compression, and this budget will allow for that, for us to address the compression for our support staff created by, by previous starting pay increases. We still have some work to do, as you can see, in terms of our support staff salaries, and that is something that we need to continue to, to monitor and work on in, in future years, but we also feel that this experience adjustment will better serve our experienced employees who've been with us for a while. So in addition to compensation, we also are looking at an increase in healthcare and addressing that in this budget. My proposed budget includes an increase of $3 million of the employer share of, of the healthcare plan. This chart provides some clarity on why this is necessary. This chart shows our claims and administrative costs represented by the top fig, top figure of the, of the graph from 2011 to 2018. Prior to this year, the last spike that occurred in our healthcare program occurred in 2011. The, the claims number for 2010 was $26.1 million, and you can see that that spike went up to 29.5 in FY11. Now, the result of that, at the time, they, they raised employer premiums and employee premiums. They raised co-pays and deductibles in order to compensate for that spike. We're not proposing to do that in terms of, of our healthcare this year, even though we've had a spike, what we're proposing to do is to raise the employer share and to try to look at alternate means of deferring any cost to employees. So that, that is reflective in the budget we're proposing this evening. So when we look at the entirety of the slides, of the additions that we just talked about, our salary increases of 2% cost $4.4 million for all employees. To do the compression and experience adjustments for teachers and other support staff, $2.6 million. Healthcare, to raise the employer share, $3 million. Now, one of the things that, how we're compensating for some of that in this budget, to balance our budget, we also had to look within, to look at our current FY19 budget to see where we could trim our budget a bit, to save a few dollars to defer some of the cost. And in this particular case, we looked at our turnover ratio in terms of how many experienced staff we lose each year compared to hiring new staff. When there is, there is a savings when you hire, when you lose a teacher to retirement or an employee to retirement and bring in a first or second-year person, there's a savings there in salary. So we, we have factored in $1.8 million for turnover of staff, and that, by looking at our previous years, so we can feel that that would be a reasonable savings in that area. We also have looked at our administrative staffing ratio by student and found that we can downsize by, by three positions, administrative positions, which will save us $300,000. And we also looked at our current teacher ratio of, of teachers at middle school, and our current ratio at the high school level was 18.5 to 1. We're recommending to bring that same, that ratio at the middle school level to 18.5 to 1 as well, which will be consistent with the high school. And there's a savings there in, in budgeted staff positions, which are currently not filled, but in budgeted staff positions of $400,000 by doing so. So when you take into account the items where we've trimmed our budget a bit from, from FY19, we have a savings of roughly about $2.5 million that we can, that we can, that we can put to this, to the cost of the items that listed above. So the total cost compensated for those deductions would be $7.5 million. At this time now, we'll talk about the FY20 budget. I'll bring Ms. Russo back up, and she'll discuss, share with the board how we, how we balance that budget. So Ms. Russo, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, we will talk about balancing in just a minute. I'd like to talk about our revenue for just a couple of seconds. We've shared this information with the board, but for those who may not have heard it yet, should I get this my way? We do have currently three versions of a state budget. We don't have the final state budget. It's my understanding that the General Assembly is supposed to tie up their work on Saturday. We'll see if that works. If they do, then perhaps we'll have a final state budget next week, and we'll, we'll know with some certainty what our state revenue will look like. Currently, this version of the budget is based on the governor's budget, which is in the first column there, which, as you can see, produces a revenue for us of $198.5 million. The House version of the budget would result in $300,000 less in revenue to us, and the Senate's version of the budget would mean $1.3 million less in revenue to us. They have a few different differences, and one is regarding teacher pay. Excuse me, in both the governor's budget and the Senate version of the budget, they're proposing 5% effective 7-1-19. The House version of the budget is also providing 5%, but the additional 2% is effective 1-1-20, not 7-1-19. So there's some other differences in the language. I think it's best just to wait and see what language we ultimately end up with, and then we'll figure out what it is the state is actually supporting with regard to salaries. But you can see for the governor and the Senate's version, we would get $6 million in additional revenue from the state to go, to go towards compensation. For the House, it would be 4.8 million. But the House is actually, my understanding from what I've read, some of the additional money from supplemental lottery is intended to be spent on salaries. So Dr. Parker talked about counselors. You can see that I've listed here what the ratios are that each version of the budget is going to, both the governor and House version of the budget are the same and would require us to hire six additional counselors at the elementary level. The Senate version of the budget is not moving to as low a ratio, and so we would not have to hire any additional counselors with the Senate's version of the budget. Excuse me, then for the at-risk add-on in supplemental lottery, you can see that there's some slight differences in the versions of the budget that result in the difference in total revenue. So we'll see again, hopefully next week, what the state ends up doing with their budget, and then we'll have a little more certainty around that part of our revenue. This is a revenue summary showing our revenue by major category. You can see that the $9.8 million in additional revenue from the state, again, based on the governor's version of the budget, would be a 5.2% increase in revenue from, from this year. This version of the budget is built on an assumption that we would have $2 million in additional funding from the locality, which will be a 1.8% increase in city revenue over this current budget. I talked earlier about the need to reduce our federal budget, federal revenue budget because of the reduction in number of kids that are military-connected, and so you see a $500,000 reduction there, which is a 14.1% reduction in that revenue stream. And then our other revenue category is much smaller in terms of dollars, and it's a large number of categories. We're expecting about $100,000 increase. It's largely due to increased cell tower rentals, which is 6.8% increase in that revenue stream. In total, 11.4 million or 3.7% above this year's budget for total revenue. So just a couple of pictures, because this is the best we can do for budget pictures. This is a summary of our revenue, and you can see that the blue slice is our revenue from the state, just under 63% of our revenue comes from the state. And the city is the red slice, and just under 36% for next year would come from the city based on these set of assumptions. And then you can see that 1.5% would come from our federal and other sources, so a very small slice of our pie. This slide looks at the expenditures, which Dr. Parker reviewed with you. You can see that for next year, based on this version of the budget, we'd have 73.2% of our cost related to instruction, and then you can see the other slices, operations and maintenance is 10.8%. Remember that that includes security in addition to operations and maintenance. Transportation kind of stands on its own, as does technology, and then the red slice is administration, attendance, and health. Remember that the administration is also our school-based administrators in addition to our central office administrators. And then the health portion is our nurses that are in all of our schools, and we have some attendance officers that are in the attendance part, so that's within that slice. Okay, so here's how we have balanced our budget. Much of this, Dr. Parker has mentioned to you already, so I don't think I need to read the entire slide. But at the top of the slide, we have all of the compensation-related changes down through the teacher staffing ratio update, the $400,000 reduction there. Then we have the health plan increase about the center of the page, there's a $3 million increase for that as we've, as we've talked about. We haven't talked about this, but just so you know, we have several programs at New Horizons. We have children that receive special ed services, CTE services, as well as gifted services there. We pay them tuition for the services that they provide to us, and our New Horizons tuition is currently expected to be $600,000 higher for next year. If we didn't educate them there, we'd have to educate them here, so there would certainly be some increase either way. Our fuel and utilities budgets are up, half million dollars over this year for next year. And then Dr. Parker talked with you again about the cash capital that we have in the budget for both maintenance and technology, so that 5.7 million is there. And then, as in every budget, we had some one-time costs in this year's budget that we have reduced, so that's the $1.1 million reduction. And we've also have an assumption of $3.5 million of attrition that we will take out of the budget. Recall that we've talked with you about the fact that in the past, that's been used at the end of the year to cover the capital maintenance and technology things that are not in our budget. So this year, the plan is to put them in the budget, so the attrition is out. So when you do all that math, it nets to an $11.4 million increase in costs, and you recall that that was the increase in our revenue, so that is your balanced budget. So what happens next is you are scheduled to have a public hearing on the superintendent's proposed budget at March, at your meeting on March the 12th, and then you are scheduled to vote on a budget and make it your own on March the 19th. We are required by state law to submit a budget to the City Council by April the 1st, and Dr. Parker has suggested that we would have another work session, a joint work session with the City Council. We don't have a date yet for that, and we don't yet know when we may present our budget to the City Council, but hopefully that would be sometime in April, it typically is. And then if everything goes as it should at the state level, the City Council would appropriate our funding in mid-May. So that is the budget story as we know it today, and we'd be glad to entertain any questions.
Yes, Ms. Jones.
Great presentation, really informative. And just had one question, so I noticed that there was budget built into technology and other upgrades for schools. How about, was any consideration given to the arts, not only in the communication magnet, but arts, technology upgrades in all the schools, as well as possible funding for each magnet to continue to operate in the best manner possible regardless of whatever magnet concentration that was?
Right. Well, there's a, there are a lot of things in this budget, since it's a $316 million budget. So there are some ongoing things in the budget every year, and so yes, there's some funding in the budget, as there is every year, for our magnet programs. Now, to tell you specifically what's in there for each magnet program, I'm not able to do that tonight because I can't carry that many things around my brain, but we can certainly find that out for you. With regard specifically to technology, I don't remember if there are some technology things, but we can get that information for you.
Ms. Simons.
I think this budget is really good. It deals with a lot of things that I think the community wants, school safety. Also, I think the extra counselors and ESL positions are really going to help support classroom teachers. And I did have one question. I know that we've talked about turnover and attrition before, and I see the 1.8 for turnover and the 3.5 for attrition, but I don't quite understand what, what's the difference between those?
Okay, well, let me try to explain that. So the turnover is the difference in the salaries, as Dr. Parker was mentioning. If we lose a veteran teacher who's making, who's a 30-year teacher is making the top of the scale, and we hire a new teacher, they're making less. And so the difference in the salaries is what we refer to as turnover. So that was the 1.8 million. So the attrition is vacancy savings essentially that we have. You know that all our positions are not filled every day. Unfortunately, as best, as HR tries, that's not doable. So there are some vacancy savings in the budget, and that's what the attrition is.
And this is kind of a response to some feedback we got from City Council last year that they, they wanted the transparency on, on the attrition and the turnover, and so now you all have put that in the budget for...
It's in the budget, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Anyone else? Ms. Saul's loss.
Let's say that the Senate version of the budget ends up what we, we end up with.
Let's not.
Yeah. Devil's advocate here.
Okay. I'll play along.
Yeah. What will we do about the counselors? If it's not included in the budget, what is our district's position on what we would do? Would we reallocate that money that we've put into the budget for six, or would we parse that back and do some reallocation of that fund, funding?
I'm going to let Dr. Parker answer that question, because that'll be his call now.
Very good question. We would obviously have to look at, at the remaining priorities that we were not able to accomplish, and this is obviously in the area of mental health services, and we would engage the board to see, do we want to do a little bit more with mental health services in terms of licensed clinically, clinical social workers? Do we want to do, do, do something else in another area? We, I remember we had a list of over $20 million in priorities, so if there is a different version, but I think the Senate version, if I'm correct, comes with less funding also. Am I correct?
One more $3 million.
Yeah, so, so there will be, you know, give and take there to depend on whether we can do more in another area or the same category, but we would engage the board to, to have that discussion.
And then one last question, and this will probably bring Mary Lou back to the, to the podium. I would just like to hear the difference between doing the across-the-board percentage increase for salaries and then also one that does a minimal and takes into account compression, and just the thinking in terms of our budget, why one seems better than the other.
Okay, I'll do my best. Without any slides. So we have a limited number of dollars always, chasing more needs than our, more needs than we can meet. And so doing a smaller raise across the board and targeting some of our, our salary dollars to compression allows us to target our compensation where we need it the most. As you can see from those slides that Dr. Parker showed, actually, I guess I could back up to those specifically about our teachers. There we go. You can see that at the top end of our scale, where our most senior teachers are, is where we're the least competitive. And so if we are able to, if we were to give, for example, a 3% across the board, everybody moves up the same amount. We don't really need to do anything with our teachers competitively in the lower areas of experience. We still want to be competitive there, we are competitive there, but we want to be able to retain our teachers, our more senior teachers, and we also want to be able to attract teachers that have more experience, and we are not as competitive there. And so that's, by doing a smaller across-the-board raise and targeting some of our dollars for compression, it allows us to do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Harris.
Yeah, one question. Thank you, Mary Lou, for the briefing.
Yes, sir.
Retired teachers, say at 25 years, retirees, do we have a system where we can retain those teachers on contractual basis? I mean, to bring them in?
There's a problem with their retirement, and so if they're retired from VRS, then that's an issue, so, yeah. Now, they have to be out for a while, they can come back and work part-time, but they can't work full-time.
Right, okay. Because there's a lot of professional organizations, say Corps of Engineers, that retain their retirees and bring them back on because of the professional attributes that they...
Well, you will find lots of retired teachers and others here part-time, but again, they can't return full-time to the classroom.
Okay.
Or that they could, but they can't.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? There being none, thank you, Ms. Russo and Dr. Parker, for a wonderful report. Again, that report is for the school board to, to have with us until next, next month where we approve it. So if you have any additional questions, please direct those questions to Dr. Parker or Ms. Russo. Okay. The next item, 5.03, 2019-20 school year calendar. I think we have Ms. Brooks.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Parker. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to very briefly review the calendar that's being proposed for next school year, 2019-2020. But before I review the actual calendar, I'd first like to talk about the... But before I review the actual calendar, I'd first like to talk about the group or the team that developed the calendar, the process they used, and then some of the factors that they had to consider in planning the calendar for next school year. Now, the calendar is an outgrowth of the work of our calendar committee, and it consists of teachers, administrators, parents, and representatives from all of the departments that you see here, academic services, human resources, child nutrition services, student transportation, as well as the business office, all of whom had a vital role in developing the calendar that is for you this evening. Now, the draft calendar before you this evening also reflects the recommendations of the six schools on the peninsula, which formed the regional calendar committee. And as you probably know, for the past 10 years, we've worked together as a region to really come up with consistent school days, such as our winter and spring breaks, our semester endpoints, as well as our days for professional development. And this has worked very well for our regional programs, such as those at New Horizons, as well as for our families across the peninsula. Now, after the regional committee met in October and November, the Newport News Committee then used those recommendations in forming our calendar during the months of December and January. So since January, we've shared the draft with the Employee Communications Forum, with the PTA Executive Board, and with our advisory committees to obtain feedback, and will continue to solicit input through March. Now, there are several factors that we consider in planning the calendar. First, under current Virginia law, public schools open after Labor Day, so that is always our starting point. And I'm sure you're aware that there's legislation on the governor's desk that would allow school divisions to open 14 days prior to Labor Day. So we are monitoring the status of that legislation as a region. Next factor, which is the most important, is the instructional program for our students, and that really drives the development of the calendar. So with that as our guide, we determine our marking periods, our teacher workdays, our family conference times, our staff development days, and then, of course, our breaks or holiday observances. And then, the calendar is based on the state requirement of a minimum of 180 instructional days for students. Now, the state also allows us to base our calendars on 990 instructional hours per year, but as a region, we typically or we initially base our calendars on days. Now, once we have our student days in place, we add our teacher workdays and then our opportunities for professional development, for a total of 191 teacher days. And then, lastly, we work within a 245-day contract or appointment period for our 12-month And now, I'd like to share some of the highlights from the calendar that's being proposed for next school year. So as I mentioned earlier, under Virginia law, public schools in Virginia open after Labor Day, so next school year, we will begin on Tuesday, September 3rd. The calendar before you schedules family conference time during each semester, and it also provides a teacher workday each quarter with time for professional development. The calendar also designates the Wednesday before Thanksgiving as a teacher and student holiday, with offices open for, closing for half-day. And then, across the region, next year, we will be observing a two-week winter break, after school dismisses on Friday, December 20th, and continuing through Friday, January 3rd, with our schools and offices reopening on Monday, January 6th of the year 2020. Now, the month of January includes the Dr. King Holiday and a division-wide professional development day, which is consistent for all of our school divisions on the peninsula. And while we're in January, I also wanted to mention that the calendar includes one inclement weather day, which gives us time that we can use to make up any time lost due to inclement weather or dangerous road conditions, and we can also use those hours towards meeting that, our requirement. In February of 2020, schools will be closed in observance of President's Day, but offices will be open. And then, throughout the peninsula, spring break will be the first Monday through Friday in April, which we've been doing for the past 10 years. So next school year, spring break will be April 6th through the 10th. We're also including our graduation ceremony dates for our seniors, which will be Saturday and Sunday, June 6th and 7th. And then, in closing out the school year, the calendar designates Monday, June 15th as the last student day, and then Tuesday, June 16th, as the last teacher workday. And now, I'd like to just leave you with the visual of the calendar itself. It's also posted on board docs, and we have copies for the public. And I could just draw your attention to the box in the corner. We also include the number of instructional days per marking period, and as parents are most interested in when report cards are issued, so that information is included as well. And then, in terms of next steps, we will continue to solicit input on the calendar from our school community. We have it posted on our website, so viewers can ask questions or make suggestions, and based on that input, we will revise the calendar if needed. And then, the final draft will come before you for action at your March 19th meeting. And once approved, we will publicize the calendar through our school newsletters and all of our electronic communications, such as news and notes and board briefs, and on our school websites, and of course, on our school webpage. And for the first time this spring, we are planning to meet with our school divisions on the south side to begin discussions about a Hampton Road School Calendar that will really benefit our employees who work in one area but reside in another. So we're looking forward to that. So this concludes my report this evening. I'll be happy to answer your questions or to make note of your suggestions. Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Jones.
Just one quick question. So I noticed the extension of Christmas, of winter break.
Yes.
So, super fun. And I noticed that it has no effect as far as, well, not very much of an effect as far as instructional days during the second marking period, but will it have some kind of effect as far as scheduling for curriculum or deadlines, or even as far as testing when it comes to students?
It should not, and we've had our instructional staff to review the calendar and to take that into consideration. So it works out for us every few years, and so we're looking forward to that for next school year. It only happens twice, maybe, every five or six years. Thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, Ms. Brooks, thank you for that report.
Oh, you're quite welcome.
Okay, very good. We will move the agenda. Also, in your package, 5.04 was the attendance report, 5.05 was the membership report, 5.06 was your construction report. If no one's had any questions on those, I will move on to item number 5.07, comments by the superintendent, Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I again want to acknowledge and thank our dedicated school board members for their work on behalf of public education and the students we serve. Thank you for all that you do. Just a token of your gifts here, of our appreciation at the table, and we continue to benefit from your leadership, so thank you very much. Before I get into my written comments, I have a gentleman I need to acknowledge, who is now Dr. Hubbard. Dr. Hubbard, would you please stand? Who received his doctorate, completed his doctoral process last week. Dr. Hubbard serves in our Office of School Leadership, we're very proud of him, and congratulations, sir, well deserved. So February is also Career and Technical Education Month, so I will take a moment to thank all of our CTE teachers. Our CTE teachers lead more than 80 courses that prepare our students to earn industry certifications and marketing job skills. In 2018, Newport News Public Schools students earned over 3,600 certifications, accelerating their access to technical and high-skill careers. I thank our CTE department for ensuring that our students are career-ready. Earlier this month, we hosted our first male empowerment conference called Rise, the Power of His Story. Over 200 young men joined us on a Saturday morning for the High Energy Conference that featured dynamic presentations, a panel discussion, interactive breakout sessions, and workshops with parents and caregivers. I had the opportunity to address the young men and the male mentors who supported the conference during the opening and closing sessions. And it was truly a rewarding event. I'd like to definitely thank the youth development team and our sponsors for supporting this event, and look forward to future years to come. This was a great start to a great event for young men in our, in our community, in our school division. On February 8th, we held our second Elementary Engineering Design Challenge. It was titled appropriately Mighty Movers, and presented by LeBir Mining Equipment Company, who were the sponsors, co-sponsors of this event with us, with our division. Second and third grade students from each school were challenged to design and build an excavator to extract coal and gold out of a simulated bedrock. Congratulations to the team from Rich Neck for earning, Rich Neck Elementary for earning first place, Achievable Dream for earning second place, to the team from Nelson who received third place. And last week, students across the school division participated in Operation Kindness Week, coordinated by the Citywide Student Government Association. Students were encouraged to engage in random acts of kindness to discourage bullying and harassing behaviors. Each day had a different theme. Students made new friends, shared thank-you notes with students and staff, and posted positive affirmations. I was really impressed with how students embraced this event, and we look forward to doing similar events in the future. Lastly, I'd like to congratulate another gentleman in the audience, Keith Webb, our Executive Director of Plant Services. Mr. Webb, would you please stand? Mr. Webb was recently named the 2019 National School Plant Manager of the Year. And we will acknowledge Mr. Webb formally at our next school board meeting, but I just couldn't wait. I'm so proud of that accomplishment, so thank you, and thank you for being here, for serving us, Keith. And that concludes my remarks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. We'll move the agenda to item number six. Are there any more cards?
No.
There being none, we'll move to item number seven, matters by the school board. And first, we'll have Ms. Jones. Your floor is yours.
Good evening. Guys, a couple of comments about which I'm sure we need to do. So February, it was a pretty busy month when it comes to the arts. All in the same weekend, we had all district for chorus and band, as well as all-city orchestra. Both were amazing, and at the all-district event, there were also all-state auditions across the whole district for chorus that was held at Woodside High School. Newport News has a total of six students from the region, scoring the highest scores in the region for, in their respective categories, advancing to all-state chorus, four from Woodside, one from Parage, and one from Warwick. Also was, received that honor, so I'm also very excited about that. Operation Kindness Week, as highlighted by Dr. Parker from Citywide Student Council Association, was a success, had a lot of participation there. There is also one more matter, just slightly more serious, when it comes to discussing the arts. I urge the board to look more closely at arts funding, not only for the Woodside Arts and Communications Magnet, but for all NMPS schools. The arts is very integral in a lot of students' lives, and when it comes to matters of technology, whether that be keyboards, down to even the chairs, the choir and band kids and orchestra kids are using to sit in as they play, it's a very important aspect of many students' lives. And if there's any way we can incorporate additional funding in the budget for art students, you'd see a lot of thankfulness across the board. I also urge the board to look at receiving more student input when it comes to matters of funding and matters of other things. While, you know, we may be students, we do appreciate transparency when it comes to knowing where our school-born money is located, and definitely that transparency helps in clearing up matters as far as where we can, where we receive funding, and why some programs might receive more funding than others when we know where that money comes from exactly. Those are my comments for the night. The presentations were all very nice and amazing, so thank you, very informative, so thank you for those. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Dr. Bass.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I too had an opportunity to stop by the Rise Conference. As Dr. Parker stated, it was just an amazing and awesome event to see those young men come together for something positive, all of the volunteers, all of the positivity. It just made me feel so proud and so good to be a part of a school division that does programs like that. I would like to commend the Youth Development Department for their just continuous outstanding work. I had one parent to ask, well, how does this help students with their education? And I told them, when you ask students or children many times, or even young adults, what do they remember about the school, about their school experience? Most of the time, they don't tell you about a math lesson or a history lesson, they'll tell you about an experience with the club, or with the sport, or with even a special project, so, and those type of activities also help students perform relationships with people, so they do add value to the education. So I would like to commend them as well. Awesome presentations, the budget, what our central office staff is doing to assist the principals. It just makes me feel really, really good at this time of the year. The midpoint of the school year is a very difficult time for educators to keep teachers on task, to keep students on task, and then to be on target for all the goals that you have set for the year, so I would like to just commend the staff, from the superintendent to central office on down, for the hard work that you're doing and the hard work that you are committed to continuing doing as we come to the second half of the school year. So thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Bass. Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to commend the superintendent on his leadership, you know, by providing direction, purpose, and motivation to his staff, all the way down to teachers and bus drivers. I also want to commend his staff. You know, where the rubber meets the road, I think you individuals are there, we here throughout the community, so I just want to let you know, continue the hard work and continue to do the best that you can do, because you guys do provide the teach, coach, and mentor-type atmosphere, you know, the be-no-do type atmosphere that our kids respond to. So I just want to say, keep up the good work. You guys are doing a great job. I know it's tough, but we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Ms. Simons.
I had the pleasure of attending the National School Board Association Advocacy Weekend in Washington, DC last month, and along with school board members from across Virginia, we advocated for public education funding with our senators and our congressman, Bobby Scott. We were able to meet with Senator Mark Warner and Senator Tim Kane. One of our main requests was that if there's going to be an infrastructure package at the national level, that school construction be included in that, and also, school safety really relies on modernizing our school buildings, and that we need federal funding to do those things. It was a very productive weekend in Washington, and I'm just very happy to be able to go up and advocate on behalf of the citizens of Newport News and the school board, so thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Simons. Mr. Ely.
Thank you. I also had the opportunity to participate in the Rise Conference, and I want to say it was definitely delightful to see so many men from, throughout our community, support the young kids that were doing something great. They gave very great information to the youth, they gave a lot of the youth in the community hope, and also gave them great vision. It was just amazing, I'd like to throw my hands up to Dr. Parker, amazing team that put that event together, and it was, words can't explain the smiles that you saw on those kids' faces when they was getting the knowledge from so many men in the community. So thanks again for such a great event.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Ms. Charles Laws.
Well, it's exciting to be on the board for the first year and have the School Board Month, and this is a team that I'm just really proud to be a part of, so happy School Board Month to my school board. Let's see, a couple of other things. Wow, our orientation to this year's budget has been phenomenal. Just, I appreciate the staff fielding our questions, putting up with all of our, you know, additional add-ons, and just reaching out to explain to us exactly what the school needs and how we need to address it, so hats off to you. So hats off to you, and thank you for presenting a balanced budget this evening. We do appreciate that. Another one is, I got to go to the mining challenge with LeBir, and that was the cutest thing, second and third grade elementary students with a task at hand, and I came to a couple of tables to see what they were doing, and I literally felt that, don't bother me now, I'm mining gold. So I'm just so proud that we are able to join with community partners that way, and to give our students opportunities like this outside of the classroom, but encouraged by our school, so that, that's lovely. And then I was actually the personal recipient of the Week of Caring. I got a letter from a student, an elementary student, thanking me for serving on the school board, and that just really warmed my heart. So I'm hoping that I can twist his little arm and see if he might come and say hello so I can thank him in person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Brown?
Wonderful. Well, good evening, everyone, and I want to just highlight two events that are coming up. We have on April the 8th, which will be at Colonel Fred Cherry Middle School in Suffolk. The Suffolk this year is going to host our Tidewater Regional Meeting for school board members, the NSBA Tidewater Meeting, and myself and Chairman Patio are looking forward to, this is going to be our ultimate event that we will put on. What we brought to the region as a whole is a new style of networking event for the springtime, where we brought in legislators. So last year was the first time we brought in many legislators from the state, you know, the House and the Senate, and on the, in the Virginia General Assembly, who were there to answer questions, and mayors of the, of the various cities in the Tidewater area who are also there answering questions, and we had a good Q and A session where folks were, where school board members were able to talk directly to legislators. And so we'll be continuing that again this year, so I hope that other board members in the region don't miss out on this event April the 8th. Also, we'll be doing our art competition, and students will have a chance, I think last year we had a Newport News winner, um, last year, in the art competition, students will have a chance to have their art exhibited at the, in the Governor's Mansion, students who go on and win from that event. I also want to just highlight the NSBA Annual Conference, which will be March 30th through April the 1st. I'll look forward to and hope to be there learning with many of the rest of my board members there at the NSBA Conference, and those, those two events there will round out my term as your regional vice chair in the Tidewater Association. Now, just closing up on the, I made my New Year's resolutions the last time, and I want to, I'm going to just reiterate some of my New Year's resolutions that were chief among them, and just bring this back to Huntington again, because that is what is, I think, one of the key drivers of one of the things that's, that's driving me in this discussion, and, and in my thought process of what was the New Year's resolution? We talked about Huntington, it was, and it's, it's been more than a New Year's resolution, right? We've talked about it for a number of years, but we want to continue to push that forward and make sure that we get Huntington built sooner rather than later. And I realize that now it's been, Mr. Chairman, I say it's been about a month since we had our joint meeting, and the request was made, hey, give us some time by our, our fellow legislators of, of give us some time, they wanted to think about what the timeline would be. I do think that now is the time to go back with a resolution by this board to make a request of when, what can we, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to ask, what can we have a date, and us to officially ask for a date certain on when Huntington, we expect funding and appropriation so we can have that school built. Because just as I mentioned at that joint meeting, and I've mentioned this again and again, our capital, the deferment of our capital needs continues to be a drag on our operational budget. So where that goes in line, both of my New Year's resolutions that I had, I had four New Year's resolutions, I mentioned the last time, I was only going to mention two tonight, so it's Huntington, and then the other one was like, holding my three fingers and I'm going after with 3%, right? So where Huntington comes into that play, and all the other capital expenses that are deferred, is I'm counting up about $6.2 million in capital expenses that are going to have to be worked in our operational budget, and it's because these are things that, maintenance that can't be deferred and things that, that must be done. But that $6.2 million, that covers my three fingers. So again, once again, the, the capital side of things being a driver of what we're able to do operationally. If we didn't have to spend that 3% on kind of capital needs, then we would have the, we'd have more than enough funding for the 3% I'm talking about, plus all the compression adjustments that we want to do, and everything else. So I just, Mr. Chairman, I think that's very important, that we continue to stay on the Huntington case and stay on that plan, to get that, that done sooner rather than later, and all the other buildings and maintenance things that we need, because it continues to be a driver in our budget, and, and it continues to be a drain on our resources and what we're able to do, and rewarding all the great work that is being done by our faculty and staff. We, we looked at all the graduation rates that are continuing to go up, what our, our ESL program, which is nationally recognized, we got the Magno Award, the Grand Prize Award last year at the NSBA, and we want to reward all the staff and all the great work that's happening, and, and the things like this with, with Huntington continue to be a drag, so that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I get, again, as I'm always the person between you and going home tonight, again, there's great things happening in Newport News Public Schools. I would like to reiterate again on our work session, the phenomenal presentation we've got on a collaborative work area, again, with our individuals here at the central office continuing to lend support, the walk-through the schools, the walk-through schools, the learning environment, again, those are things that make the Newport News Public Schools a wonderful place. I want to give a little shout-out to our Dr. Parker, again, for inclusiveness in the Budget Advisory Committee, something new for this year. We've, he didn't say that, but he included many individuals from the public to get support behind our, our budget, those from the PTA, those from the Teachers Association, previous school board members, previous school board chairs, individuals in the, in the community to help us form, formulate a budget that we could approve and then also present to the city council, and then have that support from the citizens in support of that budget that we do present. I did attend the Men's Rise. I want to thank all the men organizations that did come out, from the paternities to men groups, churches, Newport News Police Department, Sheriff Department. It was wonderful, on a beautiful Saturday, because we, the Saturday before that was raining, so to have about 22, about 200 young men take their time out to, to, I would say, further their education, and, and those men to be there, there's nothing more important than especially young men of our city. And so again, thank you for all those who did come out for that. Again, I do want to, I'm going to give a shout-out to our city council, because we did have a joint meeting last month. We did get at least an agreement that a new Huntington Middle School was necessary, as our vice chair says, it's, it's time again, I thought, we saw it on Dr. Parker's list, if you saw the calendar of events for the budget, that we will have another opportunity to time, again, to meet with our city council, and we will continue to meet with our city council to forge this agreement and to get a timeline for the Huntington. I think that's what be our next, hopefully our goal, that we can sit down, if not at that particular meeting, the following meeting that we could actually, you know, set a time that we will have a ribbon-cutting that Huntington either be 2022, 2023, I don't really care what time is, we just need to get a time and work our way backwards. I think that would be very productive and, and something that's needed, not only for the school board, but for the citizens of that, of that particular area. That all said, I, I want to be here for the school board, and forgive me, to Ms. Moore Buffalo, I've been telling you all night, Ms. Moore, to call the role, and then I look up here and I say, Ms. Buffalo. So Ms. Moore Buffalo, on behalf of the school board, it is our clerk's appreciation. Thank you. We are glad to have you. I know Dr. Parker had made a wonderful, wonderful choice in selecting you, and, Ms., thank you very much. I know we have another gem, and we look forward for you being here and, and keeping us straight here on the board. Again, hold on, just got to know. Also, again, back to the city council, I do really like to thank the city council, again, for approving that night, that CIP budget of about, almost $6.4 million, to help get our schools back in shape for the roof replays that we need, the HVACs that we do need. So again, the city is working, and that's what happens when you start communicating with the city, and so I do see there's a light at the end of the tunnel, and probably about this time, by the end of the year, I think that city council and the school board will be on the same page. I think we're almost there. At least we're talking the same language, we need to talk the same time. So I think that's the biggest thing, we're talking the same language, we just need to get on the same time. That being said, there's one other thing, I, again, why we are so phenomenal at this school system, I've got a little note here that Dr. Parker, he, I'm going to say it anyway, if you haven't heard, Newport News Schools will be opening with a two-hour delay tomorrow, for all those out in TV land. Put a smile on your face, the kids and our students will get a, a couple extra hours of sleep. I know our teenagers need those extra hours, and will really enjoy those extra hours of sleep. That said, if there's no other information or matters to come before the board, I will adjourn the meeting to this evening.